The Town of Plainville. Established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our Town Council meeting. Tonight is August 21st, 7:00 PM. I would like to begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance. And Councilwoman Wazorko will lead us in that. If you'll all stand, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. We have a couple of presentations this evening. It's so nice to see a full house. Normally in the summer, there's a few here and there, but not such a great turnout. The first one that we're going to be doing is a very special young man who lives in Plainville. And the Town Council is going to present Nico Faisal. Did I say your last name correctly? It's close enough. We're going to present you with a proclamation. And I'm going to come down here and read it, Nico. And I would like you to join me at the podium so you can get on the TV camera. All right. I'm going to turn this around. But you can stand right here. And they're going to look at your face in that camera. Just a little preview. Nico is an extraordinary young man. He has taken upon himself to be a champion of others. And this involves a lot of time, a lot of energy, and a lot of thinking. And he's been doing this for a very long time. And I quite recently realized the Town Council has never recognized you for all these wonderful things that you do, Nico. So tonight is your night. I'm going to read his story. It is long, but it is a wonderful story that you're all going to learn about what this young man has been doing for other people in the town of Plainville. Okay? And elsewhere, right?
Yep.
Okay. So, I'm sorry about the noise. "The proclamation is for Nico's Lemonade Stand. Whereas, at the wise young age of four, Nico Faisal had the desire to set up a lemonade stand in front of his house, like he saw on TV, to hand out cups of lemonade to people unmindful that he would make money. Then in the first year, he raised approximately $65, which he generously chose the proceeds to go to Make-A-Wish Foundation, because they make kids' dreams come true." How's that so far? Good? And whereas, the following year, Nico set his fundraising goal at $100 and repeated his efforts adding cookies and treats to the menu as well as lemonade. And after receiving some much deserved front-page recognition from the Bristol Press, the second annual Nico's Lemonade Stand raised over $800. And whereas, throughout the past eight years, and with continued help and support of his parents, Kyle and Angela, younger sister Gianna -- Is that your sister? Okay. We're waving to the family. His Papa and Gigi. Are they here? Okay. His uncles and cousins, numerous friends, and countless members of the Plainville community, Nico's Lemonade Stand expanded its menu to include fritters, funnel cakes, popcorn, snowcones, and cotton candy, raised close to $70,000. Yes, indeed. Thus making it possible for Nico to grant six children with life-threatening illnesses, two of them being from Plainville residents, their special wishes that included two trips to Disney World, a Disney Cruise, a family backyard pool, a trip to Legoland, and another pending trip to Disney World. And, there's more. Whereas Nico has been nationally recognized by Make-A-Wish America, receiving the Youth Engagement Award, has been a recipient of the Kohl's Care Scholarship Program 2013 through '15, and the Superintendent's Award at Tofflon Elementary School, is a high honors student at the Middle School of Plainville, is a member of the Plainville Recreation Swim Team and the Middle School of Plainville Swim Team, acted with the Plainville Choral Society, starring in "The Sound of Music" and "Rockin' Snow White," is a member of the Plainville Youth Theater, plays the piano -- he's still more than this young man does in all of his spare time -- enjoys singing, is currently teaching himself to play the guitar, and looks forward to joining the track team in the fall. Pretty good. And whereas, in addition to the tremendous fundraising support from Ken Crowley and Paradise Pools, they are joined by the Pettit Family Foundation, Big Y, Pollyachi's Restaurant, J-E-K-L of Plainville, Carrier Group, Convaco Technologies, Sign Pro, Fighting Chance Monster Trucks, and countless others who believe in Nico's selfless efforts. And now therefore, we, the members of the Town Council, on behalf of all our citizens, do hereby extend to Nico Faisal and his family and friends our sincere and deepest appreciation for his charitable spirit and gracious actions, and wish him continued success with his legacy, Nico's Lemonade Stand, so he may, to attain grander goals, therefore having a greater impact, and truly making a difference in this world, one cup at a time, and to generously make kids' dreams come true. It's dated today, Plainville, Connecticut, this 21st day of August 2017. It is signed by the Plainville Town Council, Catherine Pagliisi, Scott Saunders, Danny Carrier, Robert Ciotto, Sr., Rosemary Moranti, Deborah J. Tompkins, and Christopher J. Wazorko. And that is remarkable. And how old are you?
I am 12 now.
He's only 12 years old. He has done more. That is a story that not only most children cannot say they can own, but many adults have not been able to achieve some of these amazing accomplishments that Nico has done in 12 years. I can only imagine what lays forward to him in his future. But the Town Council is extremely proud of you, Nico. And we wanted to make sure that you know that. And we're going to give you this gigantic proclamation that you can take home, and you can put it in a place of honor. Would you like to say something to everybody?
From the years I began this journey, the town of Plainville have been so supportive of my lemonade stands. It wouldn't have been so successful if it wasn't for this amazing town, the police department, the fire department, and all the members of the community. And you all help make kids' dreams come true. Without the community of the support and its contributions, I wouldn't have been able to grant six wishes of children with life-threatening illnesses, that the Make-A-Wish Foundation has made great efforts to find local families for these wishes. These wishes mean so much to their kids and families. Their wish means that some precious moments they don't have to worry about their painful treatments, expenses, and doctor's appointments. The wishes that mean that families can all be together and happy, the wishes that help them find some peace. This proclamation means so much to me and my family. Thank you so much for all your support through these last eight years. I truly cannot have been accomplished with my annual goals if it weren't for you all. Thank you again. I will cherish this.
Oh, congratulations. Thank you for coming tonight, Nico, and Mom and Dad, and Grandma and Grandpa, and all of your aunts and uncles. It's wonderful to realize that young people have such passion and dedication to a cause. And you certainly embody that and exemplify all that is good with your generation. So, thank you again for all that you do. It's truly appreciated. Next on our agenda, we have a presentation regarding some of our fire people. So Ray is going to -- is Ray going to do this?
Kevin.
Kevin's going to do it.
Kevin's going to do it. Okay. Sorry. We had Ray's name here.
Ray's going to be the recipient. Boy, I almost wish we went first. How do I follow up on that? Good for you. Congratulations. That's amazing. We're here tonight. The Fire Department's here tonight. By the way, I'm the chief of the Fire Department, Kevin Tonner. We're here to honor a man that, I can't think of anybody probably more deserving of our admiration than Ray Swanson. I barely knew Ray when I joined the Fire Department. I knew who he was, that was about it. Over the next many years, we became very, very close. He became a mentor. Ray's had his hands in everything the Fire Department and the Fire Company did. And he attacked every project with his zest. He recruited everyone that he could get to help. If you came in with a little bit of life in you, he was grabbing you for the balloon festival, the pasta suppers, or anything else coming up. He's one of those guys that always had a vision. He was looking five miles down the road when everybody else was looking right in today. Ray had an uncanny knack for being able to do that. He's one heck of a firefighter that had a strong commitment presence at every scene that he was on. I learned many things from Ray. He helped drive the balloon festival to what it has become today. And if you don't know, it's this coming weekend. He did the same with every project he touched. He upgraded everything we ever did at the Fire Department. He made a path for the department side of things, which is the chiefs, the apparatus, and so forth. He made it easy for the chiefs for years to come to follow. He made our lives a hell of a lot better just by being who he is. In the years when we got run out of our largest fundraiser, which was the balloon festival, we had food to use up, no income from that fundraiser to depend on, and limited time to use up the supplies. Ray came up with an idea that cost the company literally no money. We used up the supplies, and we had managed to make a few bucks for the company. We still do the breakfast with Santa for the community today. It's a great big hit with the community. If it weren't for Ray, that probably would not even be a bit of reality. One thing I remember about Ray is he's a strong family man. That is first and foremost. That family includes the Fire family and his personal family. Nothing comes before family. I can't say enough good things about this great person, from whom I learned so much. He has touched every aspect of the Fire Department, Fire Company, and my personal life. Ray, thank you for everything. I'm going to miss you around the firehouse every day. Thank you.
Seems like I was just up here. Kevin, well, first of all, Nico, I don't know how I follow you.
Give him an application.
You give him an application. When you turn 18, come to the Fire Company. We'll talk to you. So, you know, I appreciate everything the town's done for me. You know, I started off when I was in my 20s, I guess, and now I'm a few years older than 20. But, you know, luckily, I've been able to move up through the ranks, to chief position, which I held for eight years. I honor, I cherish every position I had and the people that I've met. So, thank you very much. And don't forget the balloon rallies this weekend. Take care. Thank you.
As is our habit in Plainville, once you retire, you get to pick a chair with the town seal on it. Some of the things Chief Tonner covered quite a bit, and I'm not going to really add a lot to it, but just a couple of things. Ray, I've only known you about 10 years. You have a tremendous community spirit. You put everybody before yourself. You've done a lot of work in the community. You've helped out with various charity events. You are an incredible chef. And I've learned some things from cooking with you. But we're going to miss you. You've done so much for this town. So, if you would come up and tell us what kind of chair you would like.
That one's fine.
That one's fine? No rocker?
I have to tell you something what Scott learned about. He's got to keep his finger out from underneath the knife. Because the first time he started cutting, helping cut stuff, he cut his finger. First thing I said to him, "Don't cut your finger." And that's what it is. So, Scott, thank you very much.
I should have listened to you. You should have listened. So, thank you very much. Ray, on behalf of the Town Council, we really appreciate all your years of service.
I'm not going anywhere. I'm going to the learning class.
You've got to come sit in that chair and try to --
Yeah, Ray, we need to picture you in the chair.
That one's not supposed to rock, so watch that missing leg.
Now, you've got to stay there for 20 minutes. In the corner, yeah.
Oh, he's got a tent to set up. He's got to --
Before we take a few minutes, I know you guys have things to do before we get into the rest of our agenda, I would like to say, on behalf of the Town Council, to Ray, thank you for your many, many years of service. Being a volunteer fireman is an unbelievable amount of work. All of you guys and ladies that step up to do this job, I admire you. I think you put yourselves in sometimes very difficult situations. You go through a lot of training, and you represent the town of Plainville in the greatest of ways. So, I want to say thank you to you, Ray. I'm glad you're going to be around. I guess you're not going to ride off into the sunset just yet. And again, many thanks to the entire Plainville Fire Company and Department for everything that you do for us. It's much appreciated.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we move up item number one under section five, Appointments and Resignations, to this time.
Sure. Have a second? All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay.
Make it official. Madam Chair, I make a motion to accept the retirement of Ray Swanson from the Plainville Fire Department.
Second. Any other comments? They have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay.
And while you guys were all stuck there. I'd also like to make a motion to accept the retirement of Edgar Wincoop as a regular firefighter from the Plainville Fire Department, and appoint him to Fire Police as recommended by the Fire Chief.
Second. Having a motion in a second? Any discussion on the motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Edgar, like Chief Swanson, served 31 years to date with the Plainville Fire Department. And he is going to move over to Fire Police and hopefully serve us for another five years and then some. I don't see Edgar here. So, I just figured while you guys were here, we would take advantage of this time.
All right. Congratulations also to Edgar Wincoop. He's been doing this a really long time. And you can tell his love for this. He's going to be a Fire Police now. That's wonderful. Great. Any other comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Great. Thank you. We'll take a moment in case people want to take on their way before we move on to the next part. Do we have anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll continue on with the rest of our meeting. Thank you. We do not have a public hearing tonight, so the next I'm looking for is approval of the minutes of our previous meeting.
So moved.
I have a motion in a second. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? All those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Announcements and reports? Do we have anything to announce or report tonight?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I did attend the Conservation Commission meeting back on Wednesday, August 9th. Just a couple of highlights from the meeting. There was a lot of discussion and concern expressed about the Tomaso Nature Park at the meeting, and extensive discussion of that and the trail. There was town staff there that was able to report that work was being done to resolve that issue at the time. Also, there was a wrap-up of Project Peep, you know, Plainville enhancing its environment for pollinators. And the Town Planning Department had provided a very interesting map showing all the locations where people have done plantings for Project Peep, and an amazing amount of coverage for that. So, we should be making a lot of pollinators very happy. And not only this year, but because everything is a perennial, but that will continue to be in the future. In fact, the milkweed will really take a year or two to really mature. And they also announced the Fall River Cleanup, and that'll be on Saturday, September 30th, from 9:00 to 12:00. In the spring, the Conservation Commission does the Quinipiac River Cleanup on the northern to Britton Line. And this year, in the fall, it's the Pecquabic. And that's a service that the Conservation Commission really provides twice a year.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else?
Madam Chair?
Yep.
I know the chief just mentioned it, but I want to remind everybody about the Balloon Festival. Starts Friday night, fireworks, the balloon glow. They made a lot of changes last year, which seemed to be very well received, and they're trying to refine it a little bit more this year. So, hopefully, you come out and bring your friends and family, and have a great time.
Okay. I hear the weather's going to be perfect for that weekend, so let's keep our fingers crossed. It stays that way. Does anybody else have anything to report? I would like to mention that Councilwoman Moranti and I attended an unveiling of a I'm thinking of too many things at one time. Of a sundial on the property of Linden Street School. This sundial is a very unique piece of art. And it was created and donated by the Domeno family in memory of their daughter, Mary Rose Faith Domeno. She was a student at Linden Street School many years ago, and passed as a young child. And the Domeno family really wanted to create something in her memory that would be lasting and something unique to Plainville. If you have an opportunity, please stop by and see it. It is most remarkable. It's stainless steel. It has longitudes and latitudes. And the way the sundial has been set up is on Mary Rose's birthday, which is in October, I believe. The sun is going to come across her birthdate at that time. So, there was a tremendous amount of thought and planning. And the Domeno family paid for the creation of this. It was done by an artist in London. It is really quite special. So, I encourage anybody that has an interest to stop by and take a look at it. It's very beautiful. The dedication ceremony had about 100 people or so, their family and friends and folks that know the Domeno family, that knew Mary Rose. And it was a lovely ceremony. After the ceremony, the Historic Society invited everybody back to the Historic Center for a little bit of refreshment, food, and things like that. So, it was really a wonderfully planned day. It was well thought out. And we now have a beautiful piece of art, lasting art, in memory of Mary. So, I would encourage you, if you can, take a look at it. It's very special. Rosemary.
It was a very, very special day.
Yep.
I do want to mention, at the same time, I scooted over to the rededication of the Helen Coughlin tree at Linden Street property as well. And that tree was transplanted. It looks like it's absolutely thriving there. And it was a very nice ceremony, as well as, you know, the other one. And I think, as many of you know, Helen Coughlin was a longtime activist. They really helped found Plainville's park. They were very much at the vanguard of providing resources and support for our special citizens in Plainville. Plainville and that group really, really were at the forefront of that.
Yeah.
It was nice to be at both of them.
It was.
Great events on Sunday.
Great celebration of wonderful things in Plainville yesterday. So, it was very nice. Thank you for that report, Rosemary. There are no other reports. We'll move on to appointments and resignations. I think we did our fire appointments and fire retirements, so we have one other resignation.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
Motion to accept with regret the resignation of Kenneth Hedman from the Economic Development Agency.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Are there any comments? I would ask that Mr. Hedman has been on the Economic Development Commission since, I think it's inception. He is like a charter member of that group. He's been a valuable member, offering tremendous counsel. So, I would ask if we can send a letter of thanks for all his years of service to the town? Can do that? Thank you. Okay. If there are no other comments, all those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you very much. Do we have any other appointments tonight? Maybe next time. There's a few out there that we need to take care of. Board of Education, we're not having -- I don't see our -- oh, okay.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Deb Hardy, vice chair of the Board of Education. Have a few things just to let you know what's going on. All certified hiring for the new year has been completed for the first day of our school for all the students pre-K. And Thursday, August 31st, is the first day of school. I know the kids are all very happy about that. The Plainville Rotary Club is running its first annual Fall Fest on September 23rd from 5:00 to 9:00 at the VFW. Proceeds to benefit the Scholarship Fund and the House of Heroes. Tickets will be available at the Balloon Fest Sunday at the Rotary booth. And come down and visit all the booths as you're going along, because there are a lot of great booths there. Track repair is nearly complete for the school and should be ready by September 1st, deadline. Athletic Director Chris Farrell has been following the situation very closely. So, hopefully, it will be ready for the team to use that running track and get out there and really do what they need to do. With the school starting very soon, we will have convocation, which is meeting all of the new teachers, getting adjusted to their classrooms, just showing them where they are, and any new principals or superintendents that we have. So, we are all looking forward to that. And I have nothing else to tell you, but if you have any questions, I can answer them.
Any questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you. And we're looking forward to the kids coming to school on the 31st.
Thank you. Report of the Town Attorney, Attorney Mastriani, do you have anything for us?
I have nothing to report for today.
Okay. Thank you. All right. On to the report of the Town Manager, Mr. Lee.
Thank you. I have several items to speak about this evening. First is the Dog Park Discussion. At their August 8th meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted to make a finding that the proposed dog park, as referred to them by the Town Council, is in conformance with the Plainville's plan of conservation and development. Now that they have made this determination, the next step is for the Town Council to decide the location of the dog park. The Dog Park Committee is recommending that it be built at the end of the cul-de-sac at Norton Place Extension. They would like to begin fundraising efforts as soon as the location has been approved by the Town Council. Should the Town Council choose to move forward, this evening, there is an item on the new business that would approve this location for a future dog park.
I guess the silence is deafening. On to the next one.
Okay. Next item I have is a memorandum of understanding for Six Mile Holdings LLC. Six Mile Holdings LLC is proposing to construct two buildings on Robert Jackson Way. The first building totaling 12,000 square feet would be used to expand their current business operation. The second building totaling 8,000 square feet would be leased and used as a trade education facility to train construction tradespeople. The EVA has met with Six Mile Holdings LLC and has recommended a 40% tax abatement on only the new construction for five years. After the fifth year, the buildings will be taxed at full value. There is an item on the new business that would authorize the Town Manager to execute a memorandum of understanding for Six Mile Holdings LLC, as recommended by the Economic Development Agency. Our next item I have is the Norton Park Memorial Bench Donation. In early June of this year, I was contacted by Mrs. Irina Collins, who expressed interest in donating a bench at Norton Park in honor of her husband, Conrad Douglas Collins. Mr. Collins was a physician who had an office in Plainville for 40 years. Town staff identified a location for the bench that will be alongside the walking trail across the street from the gazebo on Norton Park Road. The plaque will read, "In loving memory of Conrad Douglas Collins, Doc Collins, 3/11/19 to 12/18/16, from family --" to 12/18/16, from family and friends in our hearts forever." The bench and the plaque have been ordered, and the installation is expected in approximately 30 days. On behalf of the town, I want to thank Mrs. Collins for her generous donation that will enhance Norton Park and serve as a fitting memorial to her husband, who served the Plainville community for many years. The next item I have is the Farmington Canal Heritage Trail Update. During the last Town Council meeting, it was stated that the Steering Committee and the consultants were in the process of refining the preferred alignment, were exploring potential alternatives in a few difficult or sensitive sections of the proposed route. The area around Tomaso Nature Park was one of those sections. I am pleased to announce that an alternate route has been developed that would avoid having the trail enter the Tomaso Nature Park. The trail would also avoid going down Perrin Road south of Johnson Avenue. Alignment C has been changed and will no longer include these two areas going forward. In addition, the public information session to discuss Alignment C scheduled from mid-September has been pushed back to mid-October. This will give Town staff some additional time to meet with residents that will be directly impacted by the proposed route. The date and locations for the public information session is yet to be determined. I've already been in contact with at least one group with regards to, I'd like to talk to them about their concerns. Since the last meeting, Department of Transportation officials have indicated that they are setting aside existing trail monies going forward to pay for the design and construction of the trail through Plainville, once the preferred alignment has been determined and approved by the Town Council. I don't anticipate that the Council will be making a final decision on this, so probably after the New Year, probably sometime in January. The next item I have is Connecticut Mirror article, State of Cities and Towns. The Connecticut Mirror, which is a newspaper, published an article on August 15th, 2017, entitled "The State of Connecticut's Cities and Towns." The article included several charts, one of which compared municipal spending increases among the 169 municipalities in Connecticut. The research done by the Connecticut Mirror showed that from 2011 to 2015, Plainville had the 35th lowest spending percentage increase in the state. What that means is there were 134 cities and towns that had a higher spending percentage increase over the five-year period, including such towns as Farmington, Berlin, Southington, and Bristol. In fact, Berlin had over twice the percentage increase, with Southington having three times the percentage increase, and Bristol four times the percentage increase than Plainville over this time period. Almost one-half of the towns that had a lower percentage increase than Plainville were towns with budgets less than a third of Plainville's budget. These were mainly small rural towns that did not offer the services that are provided in Plainville. In addition, the article also indicated that from 2002 to 2015, Plainville had the 53rd lowest spending percentage increase of the 169 municipalities. What that means is that there were 116 municipalities that had a higher percentage increase, many of which were significantly higher than Plainville. The article confirms that since 2002, Plainville's budget increases have been very modest compared to the great majority of the 169 cities and towns in Connecticut. This information will be posted on the town webpage, and for anybody who wants copies of it, I can provide it as well. Next item I have is the Senior Center Minibus. The town recently acquired a new bus to transport seniors in Plainville. The bus replaces a 2007 model that is now ready for disposal. Senior Center Director Sean Cohen is recommending that the town sell this vehicle to the Human Resources Agency of New Britain for $2,000. This is the approximate amount that has been received in past auctions for Plainville's surplus buses. HRA provides a coordinated transportation system with our senior center. This coordinated transportation system helps to reduce costs for both the town and HRA, and is heralded by the State Department of Transportation as an example of multi-agency cooperation to control expenses. In fact, the DOT has encouraged other communities to establish similar agreements to what Plainville has set up with the HRA. There is an item on the new business that would sell the surplus senior center bus to HRA for $2,000. Next item I have is the Norton Park Timber Guide Rail Fence Bid. On August 15th, two bids were received to replace a major portion of the timber fences at Norton Park. A low bid of $72,000 was submitted by Priority Landscaping of Brookfield, Connecticut. The specific locations of the replacement fencing will be determined by the Buildings and Grounds Superintendent in conjunction with the Town Manager's offer. The money for the fencing will come from a state grant that was secured several years ago to make improvements to both Norton and Pateroski Parks. The next improvement to be made as part of the grant will be the construction of a concession stand and bathrooms at Norton Park. There is an item on the new business that would avoid the Timber Guide Rail Fence Bid to Priority Landscaping of Brookfield, Connecticut, in the amount of $72,000. Next item I have is the Water Pollution Control Phosphorus Removal Project Update. Town and staff have been in contact with the State Department of Energy and Environmental Protection regarding the grant reimbursement for the phosphorus upgrade project for the wastewater treatment plant. The state of Connecticut has mandated that the Plainville Treatment Plant be upgraded to reduce the discharge of phosphorus into the Pecuavic River. The total cost of the project is estimated at $15,264,000. After consultation with the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, it is estimated that Plainville will receive grant funds totaling $6,715,000 for the project, leaving a local cost of $9,264,000. This is an overall reimbursement rate of 44% for the project. The remaining local share will be financed by a state loan that carries an interest rate, a fixed interest rate of 2%. There is a limited time to have this project included on the November 7th election ballot. Town staff is recommending that the Town Council plan the referendum for early 2018. It will give us time to get out and have some public information sessions and some public hearings to allow staff and consultants to explain and to answer questions that people might have about this project before they cast a ballot. Unfortunately, it's a mandate, and while the town technically votes on it, at least the way it's set up with statutes, we're going to do it one way or another. And what the state is dangling in front of us is an increased grant reimbursement if we do it now. And we're under orders to finish it within a certain time period, which, you know, this would keep us on that time period. There'll be more discussion about this as we move forward over the next several months, and hopefully, any questions that people have will be, you know, people have a better understanding of the project. Next item I have is our financial dashboard. I actually have two dashboards. One is for fiscal year '17, and one is for the first month of fiscal year '18. What I like to do is very quickly, perhaps, review fiscal year '17, which is for the full year. Maybe just touch on '17. Do you have copies of this in front of you this evening? What that shows on the first page, which is the expenditure page, is that the overall spending, the town budget, this was the amended budget after...
Excuse me, Rob. You say we have a copy of it?
We don't have a hard copy. Are we supposed to? I can look it on the screen, but...
Yeah, no, no.
Give us a minute.
Page 63. Yeah, it's in the packet.
Overall expenditures came in at 98.31% of what was, you know, budgeted, at least the amended budget. This is approximately $1 million less than what was the expenditures that were appropriated. Under the general government budget, came in about $886,000 less than what was appropriated. Board of Education came in $100,000 less. Because of the additional appropriations that were done on the general government budget, if you went to the original town budget as opposed to the amended budget, the overall budget came in about $228,000, excuse me, $228,000 less than what was originally budgeted. With the additional appropriations, it ended up $886,000 less. That's about 1% of the budget we came in under, you know, what was originally estimated. What that means is that based upon the original budget, expenditures came in about $328,000 less than what was budgeted for the year. With regards to police overtime, which you're familiar with, you know, those items are pretty close to what we had talked about in the past. With regards to revenues, which is on the second page, total town budget, we collected about $200,000 more of revenue than what we had budgeted. We had budgeted $57,642,000. We collected about $200,000 more than that. On current taxes, we collected about $150,000 more than what was budgeted. Fund balances, you can see below, when you put all of those numbers together, as a result of, you know, this is unaudited, this is coming from the Finance Department, our fund balance increased, we're estimating that the fund balance will increase by approximately $526,000 overall from, after all of the supplemental appropriations and when you take into account the revenues received and the expenditures that were made, our fund balance will increase from about $9.5 million to a little bit over $10 million. With regards to some of the special funds, the Recreation Fund, for example, which is a separate fund, expenses came in about $26,000 less than what was budgeted, and revenues came in approximately $17,000 higher than what was budgeted. What that means is that that Recreation Fund is expected to increase from the previous year, the beginning of the year, by a little bit over $51,000. With the Robertson Airport budget, we're projecting, you know, an ending balance, you know, unassigned fund balance of approximately $426,000. So the Robertson Airport has, you know, has been operating in the black since the town, you know, acquired the property and began running the operation. With regards to the Water Pollution Control Budget, which is a separate enterprise fund, meaning the user charges go into a separate fund, and the expenses for the operation of the sewer plant and the pump stations and whatnot are only paid for by the users. So if you're on a septic system, you know, if you're not on sewers, you don't pay into this fund. The budget, overall expenses came in about $130,000 less than what was budgeted, and revenues came in approximately $160,000 higher than what was estimated, which means that the overall budget for the water pollution control is expected to increase, their unassigned fund balance, by about $290,000. The plan is to build up the unassigned fund balance so that when the project is, the phosphor project that I spoke about earlier, has a sufficient balance so that, so that user charges don't get skewed in a very upward, you know, hit all at one year. So there's a concerted effort to slowly build that up so that the increase when the, when the, when it comes time to pay back the state loan will not be as significant as it might otherwise be. With regards to the Plainville Library Budget, expenses came in higher, about $13,700 higher than what was budgeted, mainly because the Library Board of Trustees used some of their, some of their local, you know, their, I should say, legacy funds. However, their revenue came in about $50,000 higher than what was estimated. So overall, we anticipate that the library's unassigned fund balance will increase during fiscal year '17 by about $36,000. The Health Insurance Fund, this is where we're having some issues. We were doing pretty good at the beginning of the year, and it's a self-insured fund. Right now, we run on a deficit in the current fiscal year of about $771,000. That has to do with claims, came in higher than what was estimated, and I anticipate that the, you know, that probably sometime in September, we'll be sending that with the council and talking about, you know, what options are out there with regards to supplementing that particular self-insurance fund. Finally, on the last page, we have major projects that we, that we track. One is the Park Improvement Fund. You know, we're a little bit over 53%, right around 53% completed. With the $72,000 you're going to add tonight, that will bump that up. The amount of money that we have budgeted for the concession stand and the new bathrooms at Norton Park is somewhere in the quarter of a million dollar range, so that's, you know, and we anticipate that that's going to be designed over the winter time and hopefully constructed next construction season. The Turf Field Project, as was reported under the Board of Education Liaison's report, the track is on track to finish by the time September 1st rolls around. It's been monitored very closely by both the contractor and our consultants, KBA. Olin Street, some of the demolition project, 88% spent to date. Some of those expenditures recently have to do with the, well, it's more reflected in the July report, is, has to do with the sidewalk installation and the fence installation in there. The road bond, to date, or at least as of June 30th, spent in the vicinity of $2.5 million. It's a $5 million bond, so we're pretty much at 50% of that. Cook Street Reconstruction, we spent some dollars, and had to do with some additional drainage and sidewalks that were installed on Cook Street. And the phosphorus removal project, not much has been spent on that to date, as we're, well, not much has been spent recently, but that has to do with the engineering for that project, which is moving forward as well. As it relates to fiscal year '18, we only have one month in place. We're running pretty much as expected, certainly pretty close to the two, we're running a little bit under as far as the, as far as the general government is concerned for the first month of expenditures compared to the two-year average. Board of Ed's running a little bit higher, but we're talking the difference between 2.5% of their budget and 4% of their budget. They don't spend much during summer. Our police overtime in July was lower than the two-year average, so we hope that that trend continues as we, that's always been a very difficult one for us. I'll also notice on the roadways overtime, that we haven't had much overtime in July as compared to last couple of years where they were working on, you know, the Northwest Drive Bridge and whatnot. So you'll see that there isn't as much overtime in comparison to previous years. So other than that, I have nothing more to report. Under my report, I'd like to turn it over to Scott for, unless you have any questions about the, about any of the financial dashboard information. I have it turned over to Scott for some happenings, and then be available to answer any questions you may have for me.
Scott?
Good evening. I have a few things to report on that are happening here in Plainville. Bulk pickup will be resuming for the fall on Monday, September 11th, and run through October 30th. Eligible residents must call CWPM at 860-793-6721 to schedule a pickup. When calling, you will need to provide your name, address, phone number, and a complete description of the items to be collected. Calls placed by 3:00 PM on Friday can be scheduled for collection on Monday. Something's happening over at the Senior Center this month. On Tuesday, August 22nd, from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM, they are hosting a monthly discussion group entitled "Great Discussions." If you're interested in how foreign policy works and would like to contribute to national discussions and influence American diplomacy at home and abroad, join Great Discussions by the Foreign Policy Association. This group discussion is open to anyone who is interested in learning more about foreign policy. For more information, contact Reference Desk. On Wednesday, August 23rd, from 4:00 PM to 5:00 PM, try the course on "Build a Better Lunch" for ages 5-plus with a caregiver. Registration is required by visiting the library. If you're in need of some inspiration when it comes to packing balanced lunches, join the Big Y in-store consultant dietitian, Katie Spedding, to gain tips and tricks for packing better, healthier lunches to fuel your day. On Friday, August 25th, at the library, they are hosting an event from 10:30 AM to 3:00 PM. It is Hot Air Balloon Day in honor of the Plainville Fire Company Hot Air Balloon Festival. The library will be offering hot air balloon activities in the Children's Department from 10:30 to 3:30, while supplies last. And lastly, on Monday, August 28th, from 6:30 PM to 7:30 PM, the library will offer Creature Teachers and Ice Cream Celebration. Registration is still required for this rescheduled event where patrons will meet eight to 10 live rainforest animals while learning about all aspects of the rainforest, including how they're made, where they're located... including how they're made, where they're located, and the dangers that threaten these fragile ecosystems. Friends of the library will be on hand after the show to pass out ice cream. Don't miss this event. At the Senior Center, they are hosting tomorrow, intergenerational bingo at one PM. Kids of all ages welcome with an accompanying adult, can play afternoon bingo. Prizes will be given out, as well as ice cream sundaes. This program is free. To sign up, please call the Senior Center. On August twenty-fifth, from nine-thirty AM to two PM, the Senior Center will be hosting a kayaking event at Lake Pocatopog in East Hampton, Connecticut. They will take the Senior Center bus to East Hampton to enjoy two hours of paddling on the lake, and patrons are advised to bring their own picnic lunch. Equipment is provided by their leader, Jared Scoville. Please call the Senior Center for more details. The recreation department would like to inform residents that the burner pool, the hours are from one to seven PM until August twenty-fourth. The last day that the pool will be open will be Friday, August twenty-fifth, from one to three PM. The splash pad at Pateroski Park will close for the season on Monday, September fourth, at seven PM. And fall program registration will begin on Tuesday, September twelfth. Programs beginning the first weekend of October. Also, some reminders that the Plainville Farmers Market will continue every Friday until September fifteenth, from three PM to six PM at the Plainville High School Green. And the Third Annual Plainville Pumpkin Fest will be held Saturday, October twenty-first, from four PM to eight PM. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Scott.
You're welcome.
Does anybody have any questions for Robert with his report or Scott with his happenings? I just, I'd just like to talk a little bit about the information that's been widely discussed regarding the latest proposal by Governor Malloy regarding funding to the towns, specifically education funding. There's been a lot of publicity on it. Plainville is reportedly supposed to lose millions of dollars. Do you have any more information about when some of these things are going to be decided on or where this is all going to start coming to a better conversation rather than having that information out there? It's, I mean, some towns are having no ECS grant funding. Ours is going to be dramatically reduced by, I think, eight million dollars?
Eighty percent.
So do you have any additional information or any inkling as to what's going to happen or when we can get some of that back?
Well, as the town council is aware, the town of Plainville is a member of the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities as well as the Council of Small Towns, and I happen to serve on the Board of Directors of the Council of Small Towns as well. The, what we're hearing through our organizations is that the, is that the legislature is slowly moving towards a budget approval process, and as I understand it, their latest information coming out of Hartford is that they will be considering a budget somewhere around September eleventh, the week of September eleventh. With regards to the ECS funding, the governor has even publicly stated that he, he, you know, proposed this to give a little kick in the pants to the state legislature, you know, and this would, this would be a worst-case scenario if the state legislature did not adopt a budget during fiscal year eighteen. And I don't think anybody is of the belief that, that's, you know, you know, not only not a probability, but not a possibility as well. Some of the reductions include, you know, almost twenty million dollars to the town of Southington, a similar reduction to Plainville and Berlin, and, and those two communities are represented by the Speaker of the House, Goerres, Arasone, so, and there are other communities, you know, West Hartford is seeing an eighteen-million-dollar, twenty-million-dollar reduction, Glastonbury, you know, twelve-million-dollar, you know. So, you know, the, the numbers are somewhat that, you know, that, you know, it's, it's hard to conceive, to conceive that something like that would actually become a reality at this point in time, at least for us that have been involved in Connecticut government for many years. So my recommendation is that we, we, we be somewhat patient and not, you know, overreact to it, but, you know, if something like that came to, came to fruition, I'm, I'm not sure what we do.
Oh.
Certainly, it would be, it would take a lot of discussion and, and a lot of hand-wringing to determine. So I, I don't, I don't believe it's going to become a reality. I think there will be some reduction. I think, you know, town of Plainville, as, as discussed during our financial dashboard discussion, has positioned ourselves so that we could, you know, weather some, you know, some storm, you know, with regards to, or some reduction, even though we have a budget in place already. But, you know, we'll, you know, I would, I would recommend that we be patient and see where we end up as far as the state legislature is concerned. Hopefully, that will be by, by the end of September. I will tell you that, speaking to the finance director, there, there are no state funds that we were expecting between now and October first that we haven't received, minimal amount to begin with, so we're, we're not behind anything at this point in time. The first ECS payment from the state to the town, you know, happens right after October first, so that, so if they don't have a budget in place by then, we will begin to feel some of the impact of that by not receiving the revenues that, you know, we were anticipating, which is, you know, twenty-five percent of the ECS form, ECS monies are supposed to come to us. By that point in time, if we were, if we were short, you know, if they didn't have a budget in place, that, that could mean that we'd be a reduction of probably around two million dollars that we would, you know, otherwise get from the state. So we wouldn't redo, you know, our, our cash flow is such that, you know, we, we can absorb, you know, that for a period of time. The other, next payment wouldn't happen until after January first, so, so, you know, we wouldn't be into a cash flow situ, you know, even if the worst-case scenario came forward, we wouldn't be in a cash flow problem until after July first, you know, to begin with. So, so, you know, so I would just, you know, that's, that's the latest that I know at this point.
Okay. Well, you know, I, that's the best and latest information you have. I mean, I'm sure many people can't even imagine that the wealth that the state of Connecticut has enjoyed for so many generations is now in such desperate condition. It is unfathomable, and this is creating angst among educators, among town managers, among city councils. There is a reality out there that something is going to happen, clearly. The state is in such a deficit that something is going to happen, and if it's going to be to this degree, it would devastate, absolutely devastate almost every city and town in the state of Connecticut. So I'm hoping with the greatest of hope that a different path will be taken and that some, there's some great thinkers in Hartford that are going to be able to help plan this out for a while and not just have this come down on every city and town. And I, I am hoping for the best, but, you know, Robert, nobody ever thought we would ever be in a situation such as this, and here we are.
The leadership of the Council of Small Towns, of which I am a member of the leadership committee, the Board of Directors, feels that the, you know, this unilateral reduction in the ECS formula is something that's beyond the, you know, beyond the ability of the, of the governor to do unilaterally. There's been some discussion about possibly instituting a lawsuit against the state through the Council of Small Towns. I, I know that our, our board will be discussing that over the next several weeks to see if that's, you know, if that's something that the board wants to do on behalf of the Council of Small Towns. You know, so that's, that's another avenue, but I, I do believe that the legislature is going to, you know, come up with some type of budget that's going to significantly reduce the, the reduction that, that's being proposed by the governor. You know, where we end up, you know, remains to be seen.
Okay. I know you will, when, from your knowledge, it'll come back to us right away, so I appreciate your thoughts. Is there anything else you'd like to ask the town manager?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just a couple of questions and then a comment. The fencing at Norton Park, do you have any, even percentage-wise, how much does seventy-two thousand dollars replace at Norton Park?
Probably gets us about, probably gets us about seventy percent.
Okay.
I will tell you that we reduced that contract, the idea was, or the, the plan was to probably replace close to a hundred percent, but I asked staff to reduce that at this point in time because I wanted, I felt the higher priority was the, was the concession stand and more particularly the bathrooms. I didn't want to come up short on the, on that particular portion of the project, so whatever is left over from the, from that project, if there's, if there's surplus dollars then, or extra dollars in the grant, that we would maybe complete.
Could always go back.
But I didn't want to use up a hundred percent of the fencing and then come up short on the bathrooms.
And regarding the water pollution control plant and the phosphorus removal project, I know the state's offering a two percent loan, and I don't know where interest rates are right now, but I know there was a period of time not too long ago where we could actually borrow money for less than that, I believe. If we accept the grant money, are we obligated to take the loan at two percent if we go out to other financial, financial institutions and can get it for less? Or is that kind of one of those gray areas we'll talk about later?
You know, I don't know the answer to that question. I would assume, you know, maybe make an assumption, you know, at this point in time is probably not the wisest thing to do, but, you know, if, if we didn't want the state loan money, they would give it, you know, they would loan it to somebody else at two percent. So, but I don't think anybody has, has opted out of that, you know. So I would prefer to cross that bridge when we get closer to see what the interest rates are. They have prepped up a little bit, but they're still, they're still pretty record lows.
Yeah, so I don't know exactly today where they are, but, you know, I do know there was a period of time where we could borrow money for.
Less than two percent.
Yes. And lastly, I'll throw out the first, the dog park discussion. I'll be the first one.
Okay.
You know, I've had an opportunity to talk to some of the neighborhood this past week. I think as far as I'm concerned, I, I am in favor of a dog park. Let me throw that out there. However, I think before we move forward tonight with picking a location, I do think there's some more work that needs to be done. I think some conversations maybe with the neighborhood and, you know, whether it's the town manager or people from this side, or I know Dan's here, you know, even to help out, to answer some questions that they have before we move forward. So that's where I am tonight. I prefer that we not move forward tonight, that we do a little bit more work, getting some questions answered, and then come back when, you know, we've had a chance to respond to some of the neighbors' questions and comments, and I'm sure we're going to hear from some of them. I know some of them are here tonight, but, you know, after we get through this meeting, some follow-up happen and we talk to them, and then come back when we have a little bit more information.
Okay. Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would agree with Consulwoman Wazorko on that. I think that we're going to be hearing from people tonight, but I also think it'd be perhaps at least one more formal opportunity when we listen to people and we thought about the different concerns that might be out there. As I had said recently in, in reference to another project, sometimes I think it's a smart way, thing to do to, even if it takes a little longer to do something right, you know.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I also agree. I think we, we need to, to hold off, I, I think more of a public hearing-type thing is, is needed for us to get more information, to hear from the public. I know at the balloon fest, I think they're going to have a booth for a question-and-answer type thing, so.
Sure.
I think, I'd like to wait for, for those results, and I think we should just put this on hold for now.
Okay. Anybody else?
I will also go on record saying that I, I am in favor of a dog park. I have three dogs myself, and I think the public hearing is a good idea.
I agree. Madam Chair?
I, I think we should have a public hearing for it, too.
Okay.
What?
Way down there?
Sounds good.
Okay. Okay. We do have an item on our agenda tonight under new business. What we will do, I'm going to just procedurally, what I'd like to do is, somebody make the motion just to get it on the table, then we're going to have to have somebody make a motion to postpone that, that process. So just so when we get there, we'll make the motion, but then I need somebody to make a motion to postpone so that it'll, that's the way we have to do things. Okay? All right. Okay. Thanks for your comments. If there are no other comments, what I'll do is move on to the public comment section of our meeting. During this portion of our meeting, we welcome the public to come to either one of our podiums. Please state your name and address. You will be given one opportunity to speak. You will have three minutes to address the council. We will let you know when you're at your two-minute and thirty-second mark so that you'll be able to wrap up your comments. I, I'm sorry that I have to do it this way, but there's a lot of people here. I want to make sure anybody that wishes to talk to us gets a chance and that everybody has the same amount of time. So I do have a list that some folks have signed up for. I will begin with the list. Mr. Kislik, you're on your way down here. And, and once I complete this list, I will open it up for anybody else that would like to speak to us.
John Kislik, sixty-five, Forestland. Good evening, town council.
Good evening.
It's nice to see that Plan C is gone, but other than council members, Tompkins and Seattle, appreciate that you made public opinion statements that you were opposed to this. I feel that this council should have shot that down instantly. You would be destroying front yards of a house and destroying a nature park that already has rules that you can't bring bicycles through. I'm disappointed in the rest of you. It should have been shot down last meeting, cut, cut and closed, gone without even any thought about it. My other issue is of, you know, I was trying to force a primary on the Democratic Party for town council. I was collecting signatures, and I, I had a problem. I was collecting some signatures at the library, and I collected some out behind the town hall here. I received a phone call from the police department saying that the town manager made a ruling that I cannot collect any signatures on town property. I mean, I searched all over any ordinances or anything. I could not find anything, and I don't know if this council sanctioned that, or if the town manager actually has the authority to stop me from doing it. I mean, we, we set up at the firehouse with petitions and signatures for council, and I don't know if this is because the town manager doesn't like John Kislik and it's a special rule, or if this is for everybody. If this is for everybody, that's going to put a clamp on this town. A lot of politicians are out there. They go to Norton Park, people have set up tables there collecting signatures. I would like help from the town council to clarify this for me and let me know. I did not want to get arrested, so I, I stopped. I had contact with the American Civil Liberties Union. They suggest that I try to handle this first with somebody else in authority, so I'm asking you. And I feel that they may take my complaint because it's not me as an individual, it could be every member of this town could be involved in that, and I believe that is violating my freedom of speech rights to be on town property and to do this. And I hope the town can clarify this. If I'm wrong, tell me, and I won't do it, but then everybody else in this town who tries to collect signatures, they won't be able to do it either, or petitions. I think that was wrong, and I need some help.
Not true.
Here we go, guys. I'm addressing the town council. I would appreciate if you tell the town manager, he's out of order.
I'll do turn that, John. You still have some time. Go ahead.
Okay. Tell the town manager to not to reply when I'm talking. He is so rude. I told you last meeting, his people skills, apparently you didn't talk to him. He has zero people skills, and his management is sorely lacking. I've never seen anything at any meetings I watch with a town manager as rude as this person. And you know how I felt about him years ago, and I still feel the same way. We have a problem in this town, and we need.
Time's up, John.
We need a change. Thank you.
Before we continue, I would ask that, we have a lot of people here that have a lot of different reasons for being here. I would ask that nobody hollers out, makes noise, or applauds during the rest of the speakers. It's out of respect to those that are standing at the podium, it's out of respect to the town management and the staff and to the town council. So I ask you politely, please do not do that. The next person on the list is Nancy Blake. Is she here, Nancy? Nancy, I think it's Blake, Pierce Street. All right. She comes back, we will give her an opportunity. Otherwise, Catherine Waite, is it S-W-A-I-T-E or W-A-I-T-E? Catherine? Okay. Catherine and Nancy left. Roberta Loria, I know you're here.
Roberta Loria, eighteen Perrin Road. Thank you very much for your time this evening, I appreciate it. I would like to start out by saying respectfully that I am in opposition of any CRCOG and Steering Committee alignment or proposal that would have an impact on any neighborhood in the town of Plainville. When this project began years ago, it was and is still known as Rails to Trails. As a matter of fact, just last week, a gentleman on a bicycle on the trail contacted the police because he was being followed by a bear, and the media referred to that as Rails to Trails. This project has never been called Turn a Neighborhood Upside Down to Trails. It is known as Rails to Trails because it's supposed to be using the rail system, not neighborhoods. Simply put, if there are no rails, there should be no trails. Town council members, at some point, you will be asked Town council members, at some point, you will be asked to vote on a proposal regarding this subject. Mr. Lee eluded this earlier today, saying that it was going to probably be around January. This may be considered one of the most important votes you make for the residents of this town. Your vote is going to have an impact for years to come, possibly generations. If you are asked to vote on anything that is not a real Rails to Trails, as is known to be, there should be a unanimous bipartisan vote of no on this proposal by this council. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next on my list is Marilyn Sharet.
Good evening, councilmembers.
Hello?
Hi, Marilyn Sharet, 18 Milford Street in Plainville. And I just simply wanted to say that I'm here in support of all of the people, that I came out for Pearon Road. I'm glad for the change in attitude about going through that neighborhood, and I for one wouldn't want it going through my neighborhood. And I think that that's exactly what you all have to look at when you're addressing this in the future. And on that note, thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Next is Linda Ferguson.
Good evening.
Hi, Linda.
Hi, my name's Linda Ferguson, 8 Pearon Road. I'm here tonight concerning some of the concerns I have for the proposed route for the bike trail. Because Plainville is not going to be able to use the railroad tracks for their portion of this trail, neighborhoods will be impacted. I would like to ask the members of the town council, before you vote on any proposal, that you visit and talk to the residents of these impacted areas. I don't believe that they are aware that the trail is coming through their neighborhoods and what changes will be occurring. Also, it's my understanding that when all is said and done, that it will be the town's responsibility to maintain this trail. That being said, if you go down Northwest Drive, where there's sort of like a bike trail now, there's a tarred path that goes down, and you take a look at that, there's grass coming out of there, weeds coming out of there, and if you look along the side of the roads, in some cases, it's almost a foot high. I certainly hope that that's not any indication of how the trail will be maintained, especially going through these neighborhoods. Thank you for letting me have this opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Catherine Lobella? Hello?
Hello, good evening. First, I'd like to preface my remarks by thanking Mr. Lee. He's contacted us today. I'm a resident of Pear Street and own property at the old Bill Condominium Association. We really appreciate the opportunity that he is going to be giving us to talk with a consultant, but we still want to express concerns about Alignment C. And frankly, not only Alignment C, but the top four alignments that have been presented to you have included Pear Street as an option. And while we appreciate the opportunity to speak, we're highly, highly concerned that we will still remain as an option in the future, and don't believe it's an appropriate location. As you know, the town council has received a petition from 70 residents on Pear Street and property owners. Basically, that petition outlines in more detail than I'll give tonight, concerns about safety, about privacy, about liability to not only the residents and owners of property on Pear Street, but to the town also, if something should occur related to this location. You know, when we went around and talked with neighbors, neighbors expressed multiple concerns, again outlined to you in a letter, and the most important of which, I think, are property values. What is going to happen if people try to sell their property in the future and their property is on top of a Rails to Trails? Not behind the Rails to Trails and not behind the property. The proposal, as we see it on paper, bisects the neighborhood. You need to know that Pear Street is a very narrow street. The property on this street, including people's back porches, people's bedrooms, and people's front porches border the street, only feet away from the street. So if indeed there's property that's taken or an easement that's put through this property, people will be enjoying their barbecue picnics on their back porches with cyclists and pedestrians and dogs and skateboards.
I asked you to wrap up, Catherine. You have a few seconds left.
All right, so I'd like, you know, this may come as a vote in the future. I'd like for you folks to imagine that this is your property when you take that vote, because it's going to affect every single one of us. If we're sick and we need to, our bedrooms border on it, and we've got all this noise happening. If we're trying to enjoy our back porches and this is happening, it is going to ruin the quality of life of people in the neighborhood. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Linda Benaldi? Did I say that right?
Yes. Hi, I just want here to support Kathy and what she just mentioned.
Can we have your name and address for the record, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Linda Benaldi, 50 Pear Street, Unit 16. And I'm just here to add more support as far as the opposition to having the Rails to Trails going down Pear Street, reiterate what Kathy said about all of the distractions and all the disruption it would cause, and the property value going down, and just wanted to add another voice to object to having the Rails to Trails there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Tammy Chapman?
Hi, good evening. Tammy Chapman, 50 Pear Street, Old Mill Condominiums. Also a board member, so I'm here to support Kathy as well, and Linda is a board member. Just Pearon Road residents as well, having these people come, I mean, the Rails to Trails come down Pear Street, number one, it's a superhighway to begin with because it's a crossover between West Main Street and Broad Street, and the speeding right there is, I mean, just, I'm just thinking down the road, like how many more accidents, or when we try to pull out of our parking lots, possibility of people getting hit while they're on their bikes, on their skateboards. And again, having to think if it's going down in your neighborhood, how would you think and how would you feel? And I think being in the background and not knowing the exact where it's going, what's going to be done, and not knowing more about that is a big, big thing for people, not understanding what's going on. A lot of people didn't even know. So, if we could have more publicity about it in the future, that would be great. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tammy. Again, there will be a meeting of folks in that area where you can certainly sit down, look at the maps, talk to the folks that are in part of the planning process. Certainly, there'll be outreach to any neighborhood that's affected by any of these trails that are going in. Okay, that's the last name on the sign-up sheet. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that did not sign? Mr. Szyselski?
Thank you. Dan Szyselski, 33 Overlook Drive, and going to change the subject on you a little bit. Talk about the dog park. The Dog Park Committee is really part of the town. We are under the direction of the town. We, for the last 16 months, have been working close with the town, with Mr. Lee and his people. We were presented 16 months ago with six different properties to look at for dog parks, and several times, maybe more than several times, I've come from the Town Council and wrote you letters and wrote you memos about our dealings with the different sites and the different parks, different parts of town. What we finally realized was that the most proper site, the most appropriate site, and the best use of property site, was the site down on Norton Park Extension, which you all know is part of the flood zone. And you all know, if you've been down there, that it's pretty isolated. So, the positive side of that is there's not a lot of influence, not a lot of impact on the people in the area. Also, we have done informal surveys, because we're not equipped to do formal surveys, and the last one we did was we contacted 46 different people. And of the 46 different people, one said no, and 45 said yeah, they'd like to have a dog park. Now, I'm open to whatever you want to put a dog park. We can put a dog park wherever you'd like. We've gone through the six sites that you've had. We've come up with the best one we have. We've come up with one that has been supportive right now by the town, and we're at the point now if we need to raise funds to do the dog park. We also have done some research in the area where Mr. Wazorko lives, because we have a board member that lives in the area there and walks his dog quite often. So to hear that there is some concern about the dog park raises questions in my mind for which I haven't heard. Not only that, I haven't heard any concerns from Mr. Lee and anybody else in the town about issues. What I will say, the only issue that I've really heard about that's really out of our bailiwick is the speed going down Norton Street Extension or Robert Street Extension. That's not an issue of a dog park. That's an issue of the police to monitor the speed of that. So I ask you to reconsider and to take a look. I understand the due diligence you want to do. And you know what? I support the due diligence of you looking at it and opening it up. That's fine by me. But I would think that you would have done it five, six months ago, 10 months ago, doing your due diligence as far as a dog park, because we tend to you enough of a times so that you understand we're trying to do a dog park. And you know what? Frankly, you haven't done it. So now what's going to happen is you do your due diligence, we'll come forward, and we're going to delay another 60 days, maybe 90 days before we can do any fundraising. We can't do any fundraising until we come to a place that we're going to have a site. We can't go out and solicit funds. We can't do too much of fundraising because we don't have a site yet. People say, where are you going to be? We don't know, because the council hasn't given us that site yet. So I ask you to reconsider. If you've got a lot of feedback coming back saying no to the dog park, fine, but I don't know what that negative information is. And I wish, Mr. Wazorko, you would share that with us so that if we have negative information about the dog park, we could prepare for it. We would have some counterbalance to that.
And I have to ask if you can...
My time is up. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you. And can I just, not in response necessarily, but information I've gathered over the last few days is why I'm saying what I'm saying tonight. Is there our questions? And yes, I can take responsibility for not forwarding these sooner, but the bottom line is, it's really something only in the last few days that I've become aware of with the neighborhood down there. So I'm just asking that we have some time to at least listen to these issues. And I do understand your point, and it, you know, it certainly has, I think, in some cases dragged on longer than it needed to. I believe Norton was originally the spot we had picked out, and we kind of...
That's right.
Went away from that. So, in reference to your situation, I understand, and I apologize for not doing this quicker, but unfortunately, you know, I think that's where I am now, is the information I've gotten over the last few days is just a need to kind of bring this all together and get these questions answered.
Could you share with us what those issues were?
I mean, from what I heard, and I'm sure some of the people here tonight will share some, is the fact that it is isolated, that there will be another area of town that needs to be monitored, that the fact that there are a couple houses within what, 75 feet of the potential dog park.
There's one house maybe within 75 feet of the dog park.
Well, maybe it's 100 feet. You know, maybe it's 100 feet, but I think the point is, you know, there's some concerns about safety, the fact that down there, there's some activity that's probably not, I don't want to say illegal, but there are certainly people down there doing things that they shouldn't be doing at this point.
That's not a dog park issue. That's a town issue to take care of that.
And I agree, but it does...
So don't blame the dog park for that.
I'm not blaming anybody. I'm not blaming anybody. I just think it's something that hasn't been discussed that needs to be discussed before we make a decision.
Okay.
There'll be, I don't know if you want to stay there. I'm sure there'll be further discussion as we get to the agenda portion where we're going to do, take some action on that. So if you'd like to stay...
I'd be glad to stay. If you'd like me to say anything else, you'd be more than happy to.
I'm not going to say, you could say anything else, but the council's probably going to have a few things to say.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, sorry. Joanne, I think you're... Maybe not.
Good evening, everyone. Joanne Edmund.
Hi, Joanne.
166 West Main Street. Well, we're back in the saddle again with the prayer. It's time for prayer. We really need it because this town has problems. We've got happy trails ahead. You know, there was that wonderful song Roy Rogers used to sing. I'll sing it for you if you want, but I have only three minutes, so I can't.
Two minutes and 30 seconds.
So, oh, dear God, our heavenly Father, please grant our town council the wisdom, knowledge, strength, and courage to perform their elected duties and responsibilities to the citizens and charter of Plainville. Amen. Because there are, as I said, many, many problems. Now, the trail, the wonderful trail, I had some information sent to me by one of the headquarters, and we have discussed in length, of course, Pearon Road and the nature park and Pear Street, and we haven't heard anything from the people on the other side of Broad as the trail, the potential trail goes up Broad and hits either Bank Street, South Canal, or Pearl Street as it heads to Norton Park. So beware, because on this little map here that I have, it looks like it's going up Bank Street and then heading over to South Canal, right over to your neighborhood, Deb. Beware, they're coming your way. Cycle, 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 trump, trump, trump. So, it's coming. I think it's, you know, it really, it's not necessary. They found their own route so far all over town. Most of the cyclists, you know, they're, some are good, some don't pay any attention to the rules of the road, but who wants it in their neighborhood? You know? This is going to be strangers. And I'm really worried about the pavilion area over at the airport. That's going to be a big problem.
30 seconds, Joanne.
That's going to be a big gathering place that is, I see potential problems. Get ready, Attorney Mastriani, there's going to be problems. Trouble, trouble right here in River City.
Got that in. Anybody else wish to speak to the council? Mr. Frangos?
Lou Frangos, 10 Ferbank Street. I'll start with a light note. The Balloon Festival, the fireworks are Friday.
Yep.
Thank you. That was easy. Number two is just for clarity in my mind, this bike trail we're talking about, is, once a new decision is made, or a plan is made, will there be a, you mentioned something, Madam Chair? There will be a public hearing or a public meeting where people could discuss it? Will it be an announced meeting?
Well, at this point in time, we have certain neighborhoods who have expressed some concerns, and we will definitely meet with the neighborhoods. There have been a number of meetings about this already. There's going to be, I believe, a public meeting sometime in October, which there's going to be information brought back. That'll be a public information session, so it'll be publicized, and we'll certainly let you know in October.
So people will have an opportunity to present their case to our... So, people will have an opportunity to present their case to our town government. Okay, that's all. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you. The next thing is, I, and this, I don't know if this is an unfair question, over the weekend, they had the printout in the Hartford Current regarding Plainville, less eight point two million dollars receiving from the state. I don't want to hear, well, and I've already heard from other people, well, maybe it's going to be less, they probably won't vote on it. My question to you folks, and the town manager also, is if we were to be impacted by the eight point two million dollars, how would we recover? Increase taxes?
That might be part of a...
No, no, I just, I want to hear it.
That might be part of a solution. That's a lot of money for the town council to manage in one fiscal year. That would be a huge impact on us, enormous.
And would other services be less in the town of Plainville in accordance with the tax reduction? Or is it just a plain taxing, would it be just a plain tax increase, or would there be twofold?
I think that what would happen, and I will certainly let my fellow council people speak on their own, but it would be a number of things the council would look at, not just a tax increase. There's a number of things we would take into consideration if that ever came to fruition, but that would be devastating.
Oh, no doubt.
So, every, in my opinion, everything would be on the table.
Now, would there be meetings with the public regarding this?
I'm sorry?
Would there be another special type meeting because of an increase of taxes?
Oh, of course.
Okay, that, you're answering my questions. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, and the last thing, and this one, I'm a little perplexed, because this was in a local paper. The Plainville Observer, I'm sorry, getting old. What I'm a little troubled about is, in the article, they discussed a hundred and sixty thousand dollars going to the Wheeler project. Now, I have a couple of questions regarding that. The first thing is, where is it, where does it show on our financial dashboard that a hundred and sixty thousand dollars has been distributed?
On the dashboard?
Yes, ma'am.
And you're talking about money for the park?
No, 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 no. This is the Wheeler School renovation.
For school renovations?
Wheeler School?
I do, no, right.
All right. A hundred and sixty thousand dollars has been given to the program?
I'm sorry I'm not following you. If you could be a little more specific about that.
Okay.
I'm not following.
Okay, ma'am. Wheeler renovation as new project is one hundred and sixty thousand dollars, which Lee, Mr. Lee, town manager, said the town will receive reimbursement for once the state grant has been authorized. If the schematics do not move forward at this time, the project would be delayed a year. So, it sounds like, maybe it's not true. It sounds like a hundred and sixty thousand dollars has already gone to Castle Booze to do schematics. Am I right, am I wrong? Okay, then where does it show on our dashboard? I don't see a hundred and sixty thousand dollars anywhere. And the reason I ask that, you say, "Well, what do you expect, Louis?" All right. Well, see, what Louis expects is, when I look at the back of financial dashboard, it says "Major Projects Report." And nowhere on Major Project Reports do I see Wheeler School.
Right.
So, we're putting a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to something that doesn't exist?
No. I'm going to actually ask Mr. Lee to explain this. We took that action at our last meeting, so would you please fill in the blanks, so that there's no misunderstanding about what's happening?
No monies have been spent with regards to a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. It's been appropriated by the council. I expect that we will put that on future dashboards. So, it was authorized by the council, the contract's been signed, authorized them to spend it. None of it's been spent to date, because they haven't, they just started the work. So, they haven't submitted any invoices as of yet. So, while the money's in place, none of it has been spent. And I expect that we will put it on future dashboards.
Okay. Well, okay, there's two questions that pop, and thank you for that. The second question pops up. I understand, ma'am.
Okay.
But we're talking a hundred and sixty thousand dollars that covers schematics, schematic design for July and August. We are also talking September, October for design development. That's more money, because we don't want to delay the project. That's one thing. But there's something paramount, and I'm sorry if I'm abusing the time, there's something I find a little bit more paramount, and this time I'm lowering the guns and firing. The question was asked twice. Unless we are guaranteed money from the state, not a penny will be put into the Wheeler School project. And we are already contemplating putting in a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, not even talking the next project that is due to start in September. Now, Louis is a very simple guy, and sometimes I don't understand what's going on, but this doesn't just seem to add up to mother. Where's this hundred and sixty thousand dollars going if the town council said, "We're not going to put a dime into this until it is blessed by the state"? And that's all I'm asking.
Well, as we explained at the meeting last month, where you were in attendance when we did all of this, there are certain things that have to take place in order to keep the wheels turning with this project. Now, the expectation is that sometime by the end of the year, or the beginning of next year, these funds are going to be approved by the state of Connecticut, that we can move forward with the project as we had gone out to referendum for. But if we don't get these things moving and keep these plans going along, we're not going to be able to stay on target with our, with our schedule to get that school done.
And I'll close with, and I respect, I respect the town council, and I understand the decisions you're making, but this question was asked twice at a podium, by the person at the podium. Will any money be put into that until the town, the state of Connecticut says, "Here's your money"? And in both instances, I was told, not a dime. In fact, we're supposed to get, I think it's twelve million from the state. In fact, the follow-up to that was, if it's not even twelve million, if it's less than twelve million, we're dropping the project. And I'm not trying to put you, back you people into a corner. All I'm repeating is what I was told, and thank you for your time and patience.
Okay. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? Dale. You're next, sir.
Gail Puglisi, fifty Pier Street. I just want to say, backing up my neighbors, I'm not happy about having a bike path go down Pier Street, as I said, safety issues, it's a narrow road, and there's always cars parked on the road that makes it a one-way road. One of these days, there's going to be a horrible accident there, and with people going, walking dogs and bicycles, and us trying to pull out of the condo complex, it would be a safety issue for the people on their bikes, as far as I'm concerned. And also, I heard that possibly they'd make it into a one-way street. That doesn't fly with me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sir, your turn.
How you doing? I'm Art Marino, twenty-two Turtle Street, Bristol. I'm the curator for the nature park. I'm basically here to say I'm happy to hear the alignment's not going through the park. Okay, also Perron Road. I'd like to bring you up on date so far with the park. We've gone through approximately twenty-six tours, two hundred and nineteen people, a lot of daycare centers, organizations, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, they've been going for their badges. I drafted a couple Boy Scouts the other day. We took a survey going through the park, and right where that path would have went through, okay, would have went through the turtle hatching grounds. We counted right now four hundred turtles in that one area, okay, which would have turned around and all died. Six rabbit dens with fourteen new babies inside of them, four gray herrings, and that's not counting the twenty-six ducks and geese. So, I'm happy to say that, you know, I'm real happy that the path is not going to go through that park, okay? Plainville has a gem, and it took a while for me and Ruth and a couple other people to sit down and get that thing going. And I'll tell you, I wouldn't want to see her rolling around in her grave right now, and I wouldn't want to see Angelo Tomaso rolling around in his. All right, they're probably one of the two happiest people right now, looking over the top of us, saying that it didn't go through. So, what I would like to do is, I'd like to welcome the council and anybody else to come down to the park. Let me know, I'll give you a private tour down there, show you what that park looks like as a gem, what we have in there, and what we have to give to the people of the town of Plainville, and anybody else around. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Danielle Ruth. I live on Robert Street Extension, the corner of Robert Street Extension and Norton Place. I am totally against this dog park. I don't know what to say. My husband did go to a dog park meeting, and he did state his concerns. I believe he talked to you, Mr. Lee. He stated his concerns.
I will, yes.
Yes, and I've also talked to Channel Three. This park is a hundred and fifty feet from my house. There is really nothing, no barrier, a few trees. I am very concerned for the safety of my family. I have two daughters who are outside throwing a ball around, swimming in our pool, and have friends over. If a dog gets loose, bites my kids, or if there's a problem, which I have heard at other parks, what am I going to do? I have two girls that have asthma also. Dog poo on a hot day really stinks. People do not always clean up after their dogs. I also do have a strong concern for people hanging out after hours. There's no parking lot to be built, I'm assuming. Southington's had a problem with that, and now they're also saying that there are too many people that are hanging around after hours there, and too many people from other towns going there. I'm worried about the value of my house. My house is right there on the corner. Right now, I pay five thousand dollars a year for flood insurance. Try to sell your house if you have to pay that. Plus, excuse me, there's a dog park back there. I know I'm going to forget a lot. Hopefully, I'm getting my point across. I also have a little problem with the town maintenance department taking care of that area. If we do lose this money from the school, we might need every dime we can get. Other safety issues, with no parking lot, there's a stop sign there. Will people see the stop sign? On-road parking, I'm going to lose lots of space. One option for me is to put a fence up. If I put a fence up, that fence has to be four feet inside my property. I am now losing four feet on three sides of my property. Again, I'm going to say, the safety of my two daughters. We have a pool, God only knows what accidents could happen there. And like I said, my husband did go to a dog park meeting, so this shouldn't be a surprise that we're not happy about this. And last week, I would like to say, I would like every one of you to imagine having a dog park one hundred and sixty-six feet from your house. That's a little over a half a football field. I measured it today, it's exactly one hundred and sixty-six feet. I'm sure I do have more to say, but my notes are confused, and I am very passionate about this. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? Yes?
This is from my neighbor who was on vacation and couldn't be here, and she'd like to have this read at the meeting tonight.
Want to read it? Do you want one of us to read it?
Sure. Oh, you're not going to read? Do you want me to read this?
You read it, please.
Is that what you want me to do?
Yeah.
Okay. This is a letter submitted by a resident on Usher Avenue, her name is Karen Malardo. I live on the corner of Usher Avenue and Robert Street, and do not encourage the dog park plan to go forward on Norton Street Extension. This is a peaceful, quiet, lovely neighborhood where children live, ride their bikes, play ball. Additional traffic from strangers will change the face of the neighborhood. We already have a situation where vehicles go right through the stop sign on the Robert Street Hill. That in itself is reason not to increase traffic in this area. I also walk in the area where the dog park is being considered and find drug paraphernalia, liquor bottles, and evidence of sexual activity. It's unfortunate, since it's such a natural and peaceful place to enjoy. If more traffic encouraged in this area, we're sure to witness additional destruction of the natural surroundings and more people abusing the environment. It makes sense to build a dog park at Norton Park, since people utilize the park for various other reasons, and where it is currently regularly policed. Okay.
Hi, my name is Cindy Rogers, sixty-three Farmington Avenue. I'm here to speak about my concerns about the proposed dog park. I do not agree with that location. It's very disruptive to the neighborhood and to the resident who lives a hundred and sixty feet from the dog park. With increased traffic and noise, there's also a very dangerous stop sign at the top of the hill of Robert Street, where I've lived there for thirty years, and I've seen many car accidents there. Cars don't stop, and there are a lot of children in that neighborhood, and I'm concerned about their safety. There's, this is also an area that's been frequently flooded. If you put a dog park there, the maintenance, when it gets flooded, people won't be able to use the dog park until the water goes down, and that, when things get flooded, it can break down. It causes such a mess, and that would cost the town to have to spend more money to repair and fix up the dog park. And the dog park wouldn't be able to be used parts of the time. And also, the wildlife, nobody seems to consider or think is important. Our town has such a small amount of open space, and right now, the wildlife is coming back. And they've also had to remove houses from this area because it's wetlands, and it's good for the wildlife, and I feel that that's something not to disrupt. My feelings that Norton Park would be a much better location. There's more oversight, there's police presence, there's, people go there already to walk their dogs. You wouldn't be taking town management and taking them from one place to another to maintain. Also, people, other towns, and all the surrounding towns, there is no dog park in a residential area. This is still a residential area. Danielle has chosen to stay in her home, and people are concerned about the trail going past their house. Imagine, living in your house with cars parked, strangers from other towns, dog poop, and people you just don't know, all hanging around your house, having two daughters. I think it's so inconsiderate to consider this spot, and I just think that any other park would be better. Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak?
I do.
You'll be next. You're next.
Sorry.
It's okay, I saw him, and I didn't see you way over there, bud.
Brad Weil, on sixty-three Farmington Avenue. I don't agree with this site. I think that the dog park, if we're going to have a dog park, should be put in one of the parks, Norton Park, Pateroski Park. I feel so bad for this lady here, if they put that dog park in that area. I lived there, I've lived in this area for thirty years, and it's a nice, quiet neighborhood. I am sure that you would not want this park in your neighborhood. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Your turn, sir.
My name is Steve Nesbit. I live at fifty-eight Pier Street, and this is in regards to the Rails for Trails. My girlfriend has lived in this house, she owns it actually, but she didn't want to get up here and speak, so I did. She's lived there all her life. Years ago, when her father first bought this piece of property, there was two other houses on the piece of property, and the state took them, because they were going to put a seventy-two off-ramp there. As far as I know, the state still owns some of the property, which we have a garden on. We have maintained this, or she has maintained this property for fifty-something years. And the way they're talking, and I don't know the plan, because I haven't seen the map, but the state, what I heard is the state is going to take and sell that piece of property for the Rails for Trails, and they might put a parking lot there. So, that means we're going to have a parking lot in front of my house, besides a ten-foot trail, or whatever, going right through it. That means we lose our garden, we lose our fire pit, our, it disrupts our life completely. And she's been there forever. She's actually the person who has lived on this street the longest. And I mean, a lot of changes have happened around there. I mean, years ago, it was the lumber company, now there's condos all over there, you know? We walk out our front door, and we look at the people on the deck, and they're condos. I mean...
I don't want to look to the other side and see parking lots.
And, yeah, I mean, bad enough, we look at the other side, we have an empty park in... And, yeah, I mean, bad enough, we look at the other side, we have an empty parking lot that ch- church has owned for years, and now they're gonna put a funeral home in there, what I understand. So, as far as I'm concerned, the Rails for Trails should go somewhere else, cuz it's gonna disrupt us totally. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak? Does, yes, sir.
Uh, David Spencer, one-twenty-seven Milford Street Extension. Um, it's nice to hear about the wildlife at Tomaso Park. Uh, just a little aside, my sister and brother-in-law, uh, were, um, I, I wouldn't say confronted, but they, uh, they were there yesterday and they saw a bear with her three cubs. So, kinda freaked them out, but everything was fine, so, um, I mean, that, that, I love that park, that's terrific. Um, anyway, I'd, I'd like to sort of address a, uh, apparent double standard, uh, we have here in this town, uh, concerning elections and votes. I'd, uh, appreciate, um, like to thank Chairwoman Puglaci for talking to, uh, the superintendent and, um, probably the administrators at Linden School about some issues I had, um, and, uh, you know, with, with the last referendum. The, um, the town website from the library was used for a while to advocate for passage of that, uh, referendum. I was told that they were in, run by the trustees, and it was an independent, uh, group, and they could basically advocate for anything they wanted, so, uh, if that's true, I would like to maybe change the rules a little bit, because what if they decided to advocate for, uh, I don't know, you know, marijuana use or in support of Nambler or something like that? If they're free to advocate for anything, then why, why couldn't they do that also? And, um, you know, apparently, the, um, the women that were holding up signs on school property between the driveway and the entrance at Linden School advocating for passage of the referendum on school public property, um, uh, nobody knew, they, they didn't have permission to be there because, as, nobody says they had permission, and even though they're twenty, twenty-five feet away from the windows of the office, nobody noticed that they were there, and they were there for maybe forty-five minutes or an hour as parents dropped off their kids. Um, and yet, a citizen who wants to, uh, get involved with the elections coming in this fall is denied permission to, um, petition on public property. But it seems like a real double standard. You know, I'm just, um, why do these women are permitted to stand there? I know nobody wants to take any credit for allowing them to there or even noticing them.
Mr. Spencer, your time has expired, but I can, we'll talk, I'll, when you're finished with your comments, well, I'll make a comment about what we...
I just think the answer might be, you know, the, the town supervisor likes to quote citizens, so I, I'll quote him here. I also want to thank the Board of Education, the Superintendent of Schools, and her staff, and the Parent Teacher Association for their support in getting people out to vote on this much-needed upgrade to the Wheeler Elementary School and the pavement at this high school. So, maybe the answer of why nobody noticed these women there on public property, even though John is denied public property, uh, maybe the answer's in there somewhere.
Um, I did speak to Mr. Spencer, just to fill in some of the blanks about this, um, referendum question regarding signs being held on school property. And I did ask, and I did research, and I asked appropriate people. I was told nobody gave permission for anybody to do that, and in addition to that, nobody saw them out there.
Well, I believe you were told that, I believe you were told that.
Having said that, Mr. Spencer, if at that moment in time, we, you and I talked about this, if at that moment in time you thought something was amiss, you could've called the town hall and we would've certainly made sure. Somebody would have advised them, if they were not in a proper location, to, to move to another location on public, public sidewalks.
Well, I was, I was taken...
With nobody having to have that, that in hand, we couldn't do anything to change that. And I can only go on the information that you had given me and the information that was given back from the people I spoke to. So, next time, if you see something that's not right, we would appreciate you letting us know right away.
Well, I, I think I have learned from this, so, um, yeah, I mean, I, I will, you know, if anything like that happens, I mean, I was taken aback, I wasn't expecting that, I didn't think it was quite fair in an elective process, and, uh...
We could certainly...
If I do notice anything like that, I'll, I'll probably get a little bit more involved quickly next time. Thank you.
All right. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? Art.
Good evening, Arthur Screen, gotta get this right, Five Cornell Street, formerly of sixty-two Robert Street Extension. Um, I'd like to talk about the dog park. One thing that, uh, confuses the hell out of me is Robert Street Extension properties were considered, but were ruled out because it was too remote. But Norton Place Extension is perfect? At least Robert Street Extension has some traffic that passes through from Farmington Avenue out to East Street, or traffic going from Farmington Avenue to the area of P and M Refuge where there are apartments and houses. Norton Place Extension is a dead end with no reason to be on it other than to go to this proposed dog park. How can that, how can Robert Street Extension be too remote, but Norton Place Extension be perfect? Unfortunately, my former neighbor Frank Iris isn't here today. Unfortunately, he passed away. Because I love to say I told you so. When the town informed the residents after the flood in two thousand and eleven that FEMA would buy the houses and tear them down, at the time I thought I'd be staying in my house. I told Mr. Iris that I'll guarantee you that Robert Lee will propose building a park down here. What happened? He proposes Robert Street Extension or Norton Place Extension for a park. Several years ago, the town council spent money to buy the AUDI property formerly known as the Usher property, which is basically swampland, eighty-eight acres. Put up a nice sign on Robert Street Extension, says Paquabic River Watershed Protection Area. The area down there that was bought by FEMA because of flooding should be added to that protection area and not used for anything else, but to allow it to go wild and let the nature that's living down there now flourish the way it is. The, the dog park, public officials have stated that it can't go in Norton Park because it, dog parks have inherent dangers to them. God forbid a child, a dog should get loose and attack a child. What about a child that's there at the dog park with her dog, and another dog attacks that child? If it's inherently dangerous for Norton Park, then there's inherent dangers to a dog park on Norton Place Extension. I understand one of the reasons Norton Place Extension is perfect is because it has access to water. Well, you know, the ra- bringing it to the Rails to Trails? There are areas of the Rails to Trails, I believe in Cheshire, that had water fountains. They kept getting stolen for the copper and taken to scrap yards. Who's gonna maintain this park after the fundraising is done to create it? How much is it gonna cost the town of Plainville? Who's gonna be responsible? There's a lot of talk about the location, but no talk about how this dog park is gonna operate going forward once it's created.
Time's up, Art.
Thanks.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? Anybody else? Okay, thank you for all your comments. We'll move on to the next item of our agenda. I can find it.
Madam Chair, motion to approve and authorize the town manager to execute the memorandum of understanding for Six Mile Holdings LLC.
You wanna, you wanna wait a second till some of this clears out? Just so you can, you can hear it, thanks. Okay, yes, thank you.
Motion to approve and authorize the town manager to execute the memorandum of understanding for Six Mile Holdings LLC as recommended by the Economic Development Agency.
I have a motion in a second, is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number two, who wants to take that one? Everybody jump on it.
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the location for a dog park at Norton Place Extension is recommended by Dog Park Committee.
Second.
We're motion in a second. Are we looking for a motion to postpone this motion? That was my understanding.
Madam Chair, motion to postpone this until the next meeting. Second.
I have a motion in a second, is there any discussion?
I just wanna clarify, are you, are you proposing that action be taken at the next council meeting?
No, proposing we discuss it. Or, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm proposing, I'm proposing we have a public hearing, yes.
Okay, cuz you're delaying the decision, I, I would leave it o- open-ended.
To not put a date on it?
Not put a date on it.
All right, then I will amend my motion to postpone it indefinitely.
Okay, that's good.
Ending a public hearing.
And I have a second to that?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Uh, just for the, for the folks that are still here, uh, that are in favor of the dog park, um, I, I'll be voting in favor of obviously postponing this, um, primarily for two reasons. One is that anytime we have any big decision in town, we have a public hearing. I'm sorry. Two reasons for postponing.
I'll just sit closer to that.
One reason is that, uh, every big issue in Plainville goes to a public hearing. And it's respectful to all the citizens of the town to let them come, talk to the town council, and share their thoughts. As we heard tonight, there were a number of people who were opposed either to the location or to a dog park at all. Um, and it would've been very presumptuous of us to schedule a public hearing before planning and zoning even concluded their eight twenty-four referral. So, that is why I will be voting to postpone. I'm not saying I'm opposed, I'm saying we just, we need to take steps to give people an opportunity to talk.
Any other comments?
I agree with Councilman Saunders on that. You know, the, certainly there's been a lot of work done, there has been a lot of publicity, but I think this is a, a good idea to have a formal scheduled opportunity for people to speak.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I also agree with that, and I, uh, in agreement in postponing this motion until, uh, we have, you know, again, a public hearing. We hear from everybody in town. Again, I know there's gonna be a booth at the Bloom Fest that you're gonna be conducting, and you'll have some questions and answers there for a lot of individuals, and I'm sure that's gonna be a packed house there, cuz I think there's gonna be a lot of concern. Um, a- and again, I'm not opposed to a dog park, but I, I still wanna get a little bit more information as far as that location goes. Before I was on the council, appointed back in February, a lot of this stuff was all, all discussed. Uh, I think Norton Park was one of the, uh, areas, uh, that was discussed, and that was before my time. So I'm not sure exactly why Norton Park was disqualified from that list, and maybe I'll just get a little bit more information from the town manager on that, just to look over those, that information in those notes. But, um, uh, again, I'm, I'm in favor of postponing this until we have, uh, more information to go forward with it.
Okay, anybody else wanna make a comment on it? I'll just comment that, um, that the sense is that we are gonna postpone any action on this, and I completely understand the, um, disappointment of the committee. This has been, um, talked about for over a year. I remember visiting Norton Park when it was staked out a year ago and looking at it. And, um, there has been a lot of information about this. You've been to us several times, um, to talk about this. You've been to the Park and Recreation Advisory Board several times to talk about it. And I can understand your disappointment in the delay. Doesn't mean it's not gonna happen, it means there's, um, there's some more time that needs to be taken before we make a decision such as this. So I hope you can understand that. I, I understand how it feels when you're trying to get something done, and it, it's, it gets another bump in the road. But, um, the council is, I believe, of the mind that they need a little more time, they wanna get some more input, and, um, I think at this point in time, we're gonna have to do it that way. Okay, I'll have a motion in a second, I've had comments. All those in favor of the, uh, the motion as proposed by Vice Chair Saunders?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number three, please.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve the sale of the Senior Center minibus to HRA of New Britain and Company in the amount of two thousand dollars.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to award bid number twenty-eighteen dash zero-two E Norton Park Timber Guide Rail Fence to Priority Landscaping of Brookfield, Connecticut in the amount of seventy-two thousand dollars.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve the revised tax refunds as listed on the addendum.
Second.
Motion in a second, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just a quick question.
Sure.
Why do we have so many this month? I mean, why is it, this list is two pages long? We, I mean, it's not a lot of money, but...
When people come in in July to Peter, Texas, and they get the tax bill up, and they realize that they're being taxed for a car that, uh, they sold a year ago.
Oh.
So we, we generally, the list is longer in Au- in August, okay?
Thank you.
And January.
No, because of the, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Um, do we have any other discussions of interest tonight that you'd like to bring forward?
Just two items, one is that, uh, it was mentioned during, uh, public comment with regards to the dog park. I just wanna make it clear that it's the Dog Park Committee that has proposed that the Dog Park location be on, uh, Norton Place Extension, not the town manager. Town manager certainly has identified, as requested by the Dog Park Committee, to provide, uh, information with regards to properties that are owned by the town. So, I, I just wanna correct that in this, in this statement from my perspective. Second thing, with regards to, uh, petitioning on town property, I, I just wanna say that at no time did I direct the police department or, or anybody to deny someone from petitioning on town property. I will point out that the, uh, that the library, while it is owned by the town, it's under the custody and control of the Library Board of Trustees. They have a policy that says that there'll be no petitioning on their property, on, on, on the property that's under their care and custody, so that's their, that's their, uh, you know, that, that policy has been in place for a lot of years, and, and, uh, they enforce that policy. So, um, that wasn't at the direction of the town manager, uh, at all. Uh, with regards to on, on, on town property, um, Mr. Kizlick did set up a, you know, without notifying, certainly my office, uh, that, uh, he was gonna, he was gonna do some petitioning at the municipal center, and, uh, at no time did, did I direct the, uh, police department to tell him that he couldn't continue to do that. So, I'm not sure who he spoke to, he was very cryptic, in fact, avoided to say who, who he talked to with the police department. And I certainly, if he would identify that person, perhaps three of us can get together and make sure that any misinterpretations with regards to that can be straightened out. So, um...
Well...
I, I, I think it's, it certainly is common courtesy to let people know when they're, when they're gonna be out in a parking lot, uh, you know, perhaps, you know, we could've, you know, I mean, I didn't even see him out there, but I heard him there, so... Uh, but, but, uh, again, at no point in time did I direct anyone to tell him that he wasn't allowed to use town property, which we, the municipal center at this point in time. Now, the, uh, the decision with regards to the library was, was, was the policy that was set up by the Board of Trustees many years ago.
Well, to that end, it brings another question, um, regarding petitioning and/or political activity on town-owned property. If we don't have a policy or any sort of, um, directive in place, do we need... If we don't have a policy or any sort of directive in place, do we need to do that? I know that the political groups in Plainville are very careful about where signs go, where any kind of political activity occurs and it's never been on any town property whatsoever, whether it's the library or the firehouse or the, you know, the back steps of town hall. So, is that something we need to think about? Is it something, I don't remember this ever happening before, but is it something we should be thinking about with increased political activity all over the country? I don't know.
I don't either. We certainly don't allow political signs on town property.
Right.
Those types of items.
Right. But in terms of people petitioning on town property, is that something we need to look further into?
I'll leave that up to the council to decide whether you feel that's appropriate or not.
All right. Well, maybe we could do a little research with some other towns to see if that's something that they allow just so we can get a flavor of what other towns are doing so that we're not kind of going to one extreme or the other and gather up some information about that?
But we allow it, right?
Petitioning?
We don't have a policy with...
We don't have a policy.
Right, so it's...
So we don't, we haven't denied it.
Right, let's put it that way. We haven't denied it.
We don't encourage it necessarily.
People haven't asked permission to do that.
Somebody wants to petition, it'd be common courtesy for them to come in and say, hey, I'd like to do this. You know, do you have a place that would be, you know, I don't know if it was safe where he was doing it, you know?
I would be curious too to find out who he spoke to and why he thinks you personally told this person to stop you.
I'm not sure you're going to get the answer from him.
No, you know, it's...
Okay. All right. Anything else? You're all set with those two items? All right, thank you for that. We do not have an executive session, so ask for a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.